Hello and welcome to the Mesquite Chamber of Commerce 2017 candidate's forum. I'm Terry McCullar, Executive Director of the Chamber, or Terry at the Chambers, want to answer to the most. Let me ask you all to join me in silencing your devices. Okay, test, 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 you hear me? All right. First of all, I'd like to thank Eastfield College for hosting us again this evening. This is kind of an annual thing, it's not on purpose, but it has been for at least, Sharon says fifteen years, not thinking maybe more, be more like fifteen or, I mean sixteen or seventeen years that we've done it, right here at Eastfield, every year, year in, year out. And representing Eastfield tonight, we have one of my youngest, oldest friends, Sharon Cook, who I met on day one of the Chamber of Commerce a little bit of years ago.
Yeah, I'm so happy.
So, thank you Sharon for hosting, we appreciate that very much. We have a couple of elected officials in the audience who are not going to be participants up here tonight, so we thought at least call their attention to them. We've got Councilman Bruce Archer, thank you Bruce for showing up tonight. Councilman Dan Allen is here, thank you very much.
We're glad to be out here now.
You what?
We're glad to be out here now.
Yeah.
A different feel.
Yeah, feels different, doesn't it? And also recognize some folks with the Chamber that are, that are with us tonight, because we have our Chairman of the Board for 2017, Ms. Catherine Bowling, with the MISD is here, and we've just had it been joined by another elected official. Dennis Tarkley, that's where Dennis Tarkley has joined us.
Soon to be former.
Soon to be former, very soon to be former. We also have our past Chairman of the Board, Mr. Marshall Hervey is with us tonight. Marshall is serving in a capacity where he is going to be our timer, so that's why he's moved out, he's kind of off the place. Show both sides of this guy, this is what you're supposed to say.
Thirty-second warning. You can't read the difference, it's the same move.
The only other thing we want to point out is that the restrooms are just out the door to the right, you can avail yourself of them whenever you want to, we're not real formal here, so feel free to get up and move around if you haven't got some water, we've got some water over here, we've got some cookies and some crackers and that kind of stuff over there, should you need some. And with that, we'll get started. We do these forums, we conduct these forums for the business community, but we invite the community at large to join us. It's our opportunity to find out from those who would lead us, what they've got to say. Our slant is business, that's what the Chamber is all about, is promoting and supporting businesses in Mesquite. We take stances on issues from time to time, but we never, ever endorse a candidate, that's just our policy and we're sticking to it. We do only have one contested race tonight, it's the council seat, place one, where we have Councilman Bill Porter, is incumbent Councilman Bill Porter, is being challenged by Robert Miklos. Stan Pickett is running uncontested as the incumbent mayor, and Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Jeff Casper is running uncontested to keep place two on the council. We have newcomer Tandy Burrow running uncontested for an at-large place six seat that's been vacated by Mr. Tarkley. Assuming that Mr. Pickett, Mr. Casper, and Mr. Burrow will at least receive their own vote, we're not going to ask them to participate in the back and forth, we are going to give each of them an opportunity to come in and just share the stage for a moment, give us some of their thoughts as we go into the election season, before the actual election and on May 7th. Of course, the polls are already open, we've got some representatives, some polling captains that have been at work today. Appreciate Joe joining us after a long day of that kind of thing already. The way we're going to do this is first we'll have the three gentlemen that don't have opponents, and then we'll have the two opposing candidates, they're going to open with three-minute openings, they'll close with three minutes closing, and they'll have two minutes to answer questions that we've drawn to see who goes first and that kind of thing. So, we'll make this very brief, I think that we'll have some time afterwards, should you want to come up and ask some questions of the candidates and of the, of those that are up here already. I think that those that are not having to run against an opponent are going to join their family in the audience after they do their time up on the stage. We'll call first on Mayor Stan Pickett, he's come forward for a couple minutes.
Thank you, Terry, the Chamber, for having all of us here tonight. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Mesquite, Texas. I've said for a number of years that I've been elected by Mesquite, that really, it's all about giving back to the community. I've never, I've tried to never take the stance on trying to do something for myself or trying to do something that would further anything that I would want or need, and I've always tried to just do what the community wants. And, you know, it's a very humbling experience to be involved in leadership. There's so many things, many of you out in this room are all leaders in your own way, and it's, it's just amazing that sometimes things happen and things go on that, you know, allow us to try to step as best we can out, out in front and do the best job that we can. You know, it's been a privilege to serve, I am a long time, I always tell when I have this opportunity, I'm a long time a Mesquite resident, I always joke about, I was born in Texas, Canada, the only hospital was on the Arkansas side, so my birth certificate says Arkansas, but a lot of people say I got to Texas as quick as I could. My folks lived in Hooks at the time, we moved here when I was eighteen months old. And I've gone through all the systems here, even had a, had a great opportunity to, to go to school here, they do a great job, and I commend all those that go to school here and that better themselves. I was working at the time, I graduated high school and needed to go to work, and so I was working and going to school here and was blessed and able to go down and get my degree down in Austin, and really, just more than anything else, just try to come back and do the best that I could here in Mesquite, Texas. It's really, it's really all I've ever tried to do. You know, we were blessed, we got into business, God, God opens doors, and a door opened for us and our family in the eighties, and we've been, had a good business here in town for a very long time, been a member of the Chamber since that time in the eighties, and have had a great relationship, and, you know, it's, it's, it's so hard to stand up here and not want to do more, honestly, not want to do more. I, I work a full-time job, I spend, what I used to say, fifty, sixty hours a week, my wife will tell you a hundred hours a week, but trying to be your mayor and trying to continue to run my business, it's, it's, it's a handful, but I try to do the best job that I can, and I just appreciate the opportunity that you've given me, and allowed me to do that. Real quickly, have a, have a great set of people we've dealt with, served with for the last few years, excited about what's, we have changes coming to the council, I'm excited about new people, new blood, Mr. Burrow, she's got big shoes to fill over there, we're excited about having him here, Mr. Porter, Mr. Miklos, you know, we'll, we'll have somebody on council surfing this seat, and we're excited about what's happening in Mesquite. I could go on and on, but I won't, Terry, and basically just telling you all, yeah, I said wrap it up, that's what I said, wrap it up, wrap it up. But, it, it is truly an honor to serve with these men, I can't say that enough. The leadership that you have in Mesquite, right now, is some of the best men that I've been able to serve with, and I think they've served the city in a very long time, and I just, it's a privilege and an honor, and I want to thank you for that.
All right. Next. Paul McCullar would say that the Deputy Mayor Pro Tem follows, so Jeff?
All right. Well, thank you, Terry, and thank you to the Chamber and to Eastfield. I'll skip a lot of the bio, Mesquite born, you know, Mesquite raised, Mesquite ISD teacher, I think that kind of covers the bases. I'd like to get a little bit into what the last two years has looked like, and what maybe the future is going to look like. I think we've made some tremendous strides in public safety, we've invested in canine officers and crime mapping and crime analysts, public safety officers and body cameras, and we could keep going on and on. And this time, two years ago, I was wrapping up, I think, twelve thousand attempts to talk to voters, and that was incredible information, and that was able to tell me that public safety was the number one priority. And I think this past iteration of the council has made that investment through their budget and through our words and through our votes. Similarly, we have made an investment in public infrastructure, residential roads, actually, the voters, you guys did that, we've just been overseeing it. We've been able to move, I think, the dial and code enforcement, though not as much as I'd like. We've reorganized it, the Neighborhood Services, did I get that title right?
Oh, was that fast?
Yeah, that was tough. We also have a new program for code ambassadors, we had thirty-plus residents going around and talking to their neighbors, educating them, informing them, and also keeping an eye out for freshness. I think that can be retooled and redone, and I think it's a good program, but it has some major revisions that need to be made. We had a T-25 program during, after I was elected, the first conversation I had with then-City Manager Ted Barron was about getting our different city departments to collaborate with each other, and making sure that information wasn't siloed in different departments. And I think through other council members' input, through some talks with residents like the Rojas', we, we kind of made a Dallas program into a Mesquite flavor program with the T-25. And we've been able to take the top twenty-five problem properties and make sure we have a better eye watching them and administering over, and I think it's had some real impacts. You can look at the old Hospital on Thirty that is now not there, you can't look at it, right? It has a new iteration coming. With transparency, we now have night meetings, we are recording and streaming and have it open for people who can't make it there in person or see it live. We're able to publish the agenda, so that you can read every document we read, and we have the pre-meetings recorded, so you can hear every staff presentation that we have. We've done a lot of things to move the dial in a lot of areas, but I really feel like we're finding battles from ten years ago that shouldn't have fought. We're making huge strides, but I think the conversations that we're having about getting better restrict us from having conversations about what the next ten, fifteen, twenty years look like. What does retail look like, that's important for this room. I'll remind you, ten years ago, we had things called bookstores, right? We had, we had music shops and blockbusters, and similar things happened for retail clothes or furniture or whatever stores we're talking about, those are conversations we didn't have. And so, I'm excited with whoever of these fine men get elected, that we start having those conversations and we don't miss this bubble, and we're leading and we're not catching up. So, I'll sit down, but thank you guys.
Thank you, Jeff. You're assuming that somebody is going to vote for you and that you were retired?
I did, I don't want to spoil the surprise, I cast a ballot.
You should be sure about that. Okay, and then we'll hear from the one who is not yet, a Councilman, but who will say that. Andy?
Thank you for the Chamber and the Eastfield College, proud to be here. Looking very forward to serving the citizens of Mesquite. I moved to Mesquite when I was six months old, grew up in North Mesquite, and later moved to South Mesquite over in the North Ridge addition, grew up there, attended school at Hamby Elementary, Wilkinson, and then graduated from Mesquite High School. After high school, attended right here at Eastfield College, finished my degree for fire protection technology classes at El Centro College, then went into the fire service. I was a firefighter for the city of Mesquite for thirty years, two and a half years ago I retired. During that time, I also worked for my dad, he owned a small business here in Mesquite. We've been in business forty-three years, Burrow Sign Company. Seven and a half years ago, my dad passed away, and I have an identical twin brother who's also a firefighter, and we took the business over, and we're now still running it, it's going good. I don't have any, we want to make that fifty, our goal is fifty years, we want to make a small business, we want to have that plaque that says fifty years, that's our goal. So, I have a lot invested in Mesquite. When I leave, go out of town, when I come back to Mesquite, I know I'm home, I feel like I'm home when I come to Mesquite, this is my home. I'm not working for myself, though, I work for the citizens of Mesquite. It's not just my vision of what needs to be done in Mesquite, but it's what the vision of the citizens of Mesquite want, and that's my intentions, is to listen to those citizens out there, find out what their vision is, what do they want us to bring into Mesquite? What type of businesses do they want to see in Mesquite? What type of entertainment do we, you know, we have great parks, we have a lot of great things in Mesquite, but there's other things that we could have. But it's just up to the citizens to let us know what their vision is for Mesquite too, and what we can bring in here to make them enjoy Mesquite, make them spend their tax dollars here in Mesquite, and bring other people to Mesquite to spend their tax dollars. Businesses is what keeps our residential tax dollars down, so if we can bring more businesses in here in Mesquite, that's a good thing for all of us. So, I look forward to taking Mr. Tarkley's spot, I know I have big shoes to fill, but I'll do the best I can for not only my family, but all the citizens of Mesquite. Thank you.
Thank you all. The, the next portion will be timed, and so we're going to start with opening statements, followed by a series of questions, and then closing statements. We'll start with Bill, he drew first, he's going to be the first. Just before we get started, I want to make sure, Marshall, who is our timer tonight, of course is with, is one of the managers at the Mesquite Arena, home of the Mesquite Championship Rodeo, I just want to make sure that your clock goes more than eight seconds, if you're not going to. All right, three minutes each for the opening statement, first of all, Mr. Bill Porter.
Well, thank you. Thank, excuse my sunburn face, and Robert also, the last two days we've been out at the polls, and it's sunny and wind, so we bought that sunburn, and I'm a little more sunburned than he is. The only thing I can attribute that to is I'm a little bit taller, so I'm a little confident. Anyway, I grew up here in Mesquite, a fourth generation, so, you know me, but my great-grandfather, Grandpa Taj came here in the eighteen-seventies from Germany, could not speak a word of English, but his wife had some family that had settled around in this area, and they had written back to Germany that it's a good, rich soil for farming, and it's a mild winter, and really, it's a paradise. So, he loaded up as two little kids, and they caught a ship to Galveston and a train to Mesquite, and when they got off the train, they say that Grandpa Taj looked around and said, "If I had the money, I'd go back to Germany." But he didn't, so he stayed here, and he was a farmer, worked for the railroad, and led his family here, had a meat market and a cafe, so, good, deep roots here for me here in Mesquite. So, I've had two jobs in my life, as a teenager, I worked in the, my dad's drugstore, as a soldager, gave an ice cream, and then, when I finished college, well, I went to work with the school district, and that's been my full-time job, so I've done that for many years. So, I love Mesquite, you know, it's a great place to live. The folks that have been coming to the polls, Robert and I both talked to them a little bit today, and most of them, I asked them, "Do you have any questions or concerns about the city that I may be able to help you with?" And almost every one of them had said, "No, it's a good place to live." Had two or three that had a few things, but one of them that kind of scratched his head a little bit yesterday, and I said, "I'd be glad to listen to anything you want to talk to me about." He said, "I want to talk to Stan." And I said, "Well, Stan's out of town."
Thank you. Did you give the same number?
You know, I've enjoyed being on council, been on four terms, and it's been fun, it takes a term or two to kind of learn what's going on, so Tandy, you kind of, you got to learn it, Kirk, you're well aware of that, but we've had a lot of good projects going on, and some of them are still in the works, so just want to keep working on them and help them get to the finish, so thank you very much.
Y'all hear me? Thank you, Councilman. I'm Robert Miklos, running for place one, and when I decided to run for place one, I decided to go out and knock on as many doors as I could of the residents here in Mesquite, just like what Tandy was saying, to find out what people, our people in Mesquite wanted for their town. What do you want? What I asked them is, "What would you like the city to focus on, to concentrate on, or maybe not do?" And then I stopped talking. Now imagine that, a politician stopping talking and listening to the people and what they want. The reason I'm running for place one is because we have to restore the connectivity between our city council and its people. We have to get out and ask people, "What do you want?", and not what has happened in the past, but what would you like the future to be? What do you want to see on I-20? What do you want to see on US-80? What do you want to see on I-30? What do you want to see at Town East and Motley, just down the street? How do you want that redeveloped? What do you want to see? How do you want code enforcement to be? And then you quiet yourself, and then you listen, and then you take those concerns and ideas, because I have to tell you that the people of Mesquite are strong and they are smart, and when you listen to them, you get a tremendous number of ideas. I heard ideas from a man on Creek Crossing, and it was a tremendous idea on how to slow traffic in residential neighborhoods. I heard an idea out in Rugel, in the Town East and Skyline neighborhood, about how to work and fix roads to keep them repaired. I talked to people near my own neighborhood, at Galloway, the town center, about the need for people when they fix roads to come back out and make sure that they stay repaired, and if they aren't, to do something about it. Because as much as we do or not do, our people need us to go out and find out what they need, and then they need us to take that back to City Hall, and that's what I want to bring to the Mesquite City Council. We have so many challenges ahead of us, and that does not mean that the town, that there are issues with the town, that are problems that we have, that we're struggling with, but we have concerns that we must meet to stay ahead of the curve. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Casper is exactly right, ten years ago, we had bookstores, so what we have to do is continually monitor ourselves to stay ahead of the curve, to bring the development along I-20 that we absolutely need, not for today, not for tomorrow, but ten, twenty, and thirty years from now. When our kids are older and they're running for council, we have these challenges, we can't meet them unless we immerse ourselves in our citizenry, ask them what they want, and then deliver that to City Hall. I'm Robert Miklos, thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Now for question number one, and we'll start with Robert answering the question and Bill following this time. The question is, "The city council adopted goals to guide policy over the next several years. What are some of those goals and others that you would like to see the council address in the coming years?"
Thank you, Terry. Probably should have just stepped back instead of sitting down. All right. There are several ideas, one of the biggest ideas I have is we need to form economic development teams. Needs to be someone from building inspection, from planning, a council member, and someone from economic development. When someone calls the city and they say, "Hey, I'm kicking the tires around about putting X, Y, or Z at a certain location," they need to call back the same day, and they need back and forth, "What do you need? Here are the codes that you need to meet, here's what we're looking at." If a particular site doesn't, if a particular site doesn't work out, then we need to propose an alternative site. We can get your business here instead, we'd like to work with you. We need to focus on that. The second thing and goal we need to do is investment and improvement of our downtown Mesquite. We have got to work with the stakeholders on how to rejuvenate and improve the downtown so that it becomes a destination for not only people in Mesquite, but for people around the metroplex. Third is we must redevelop US-80, Interstate 30. The motels along US-80 and the truck stop, the TA Truck Stop site are not the sort of entryway features that someone entering Mesquite needs to be visited, and we've had a, we've had a very long time to address those issues, and we haven't addressed those issues. So, not only do we need an economic development team with those council members to address when people kick the tires of our town, but we also need focused attention on those locations, Town East and Motley, and other intersections that had emptied storefronts, to identify how do we get businesses back in those locations? And then go and do it, and keep on it. We can transition out older uses. If someone tells you there's no way we can do that, that's not true. We can transition to older uses and bring in newer uses that will benefit the surrounding neighborhoods and Mesquite in general, and reestablish our key entryway points to the city, so that when people enter this town, they say, "That's terrific, look at that town, look at what they're doing, this is tremendous." Thank you.
Mr. Porter said question, you want me to repeat it? The council adopted goals to guide policy over the next several years, what are some of those goals that you would like to work on, and what are some of the others perhaps you'd like to see the council address in the coming years?
Okay, thank you. About six months ago, we had two days of training about goal setting, and, well, we worked hard, and we came up with a good list along with the city staff, and they know we prioritized them, these are the ones that need to be done first, and the city staff's going to work on those, and from time to time, they give us updates and let us know what they are and how we're doing, and that's been going real well. There are several goals that we like, and a couple of them, our public safety goal, you know, that's important, and Derek Rowley was a good chief of police, but he retired, and Chief Cato has come in now, and he's brought in some new ideas, things to do, and they're good things. Trying to get more police officers on the streets, and that's happened, and we okayed the addition of some additional police officers. Some of the positions inside the police department that were being manned by uniformed officers, that's not happening anymore, we've got private citizens in those positions, so we can put them out on the street. We've got our own police training programs, there are twenty-five hundred police departments in the state of Texas, there are sixty that have their own training department, and we're one of those sixty. One of the advantages to that is that we can specialize our training for the city, for things that the data tells us are most prevalent in the city of Mesquite, they get specialized training to help, and, I lost my other point there for just a moment, but we get them on the street faster than they go through training, so, and that's one of our important goals, and code enforcement is too, but my time's up.
Don't go too far, Bill, because it's you first this time. The question is, "What initiatives would you support to bring more jobs and businesses to Mesquite?"
Well, we're on a roll there, we've got more jobs and businesses coming in than we've ever had before, so the things that we're doing are working, and we all know that most cities, when they try to get somebody to come in, they have tax breaks, you know, tax incentive, and so we've got that, but it's interesting to send in the executive session meetings, Tandy, you'll be able to see those, and see all the different ways that our economic development team and the different things they come up with to try to get these things to come in, so, and it's working, it's working. Year before last, 2015, was a banner year for economic development, this past year, 2016, the economic development has doubled what it was in 2015, so the things that are being done are working. I think a new element that they kind of brought in that I've not heard us talk about too much is some of our city staff are going out to industrial leaders, and they're saying, "What do you want? What do you need from us? What can we do to get you to come in?" And that's good information, and some of those things, we do, we do. Occasionally, they want too much, you know, we're not going to do anything that's going to cost money to the taxpayers, but we'll sure do everything we can, and Ashley Furniture's coming in, you know, that's, that's big, that's big. And one of the things I like about Ashley Furniture, everyone that's come in around the country, and there are eight or nine of those, other manufacturing places have popped up around them, just flying with the things they need, so, a lot of good stuff going on. Thank you.
Robert, did you ask for me to repeat? No?
I got it.
Okay.
I appreciate that answer. I think it's important that not just city staff approach industrial leaders, but that our leaders approach industrial leaders. I would like that economic development team, and Terry, I'm sorry to draft you, but we'd bring you along as well, and Mesquite needs to go out and sell itself. Its council members, whoever, our, our city staff, that team needs to approach Milestone Electric, "What can we do to get you here in Mesquite?" Amazon, "We'd love a distribution center here in Mesquite, Amazon, what can we do to get you here?" And on, and on, and on, and maybe they don't come to us today, maybe they come to us tomorrow, maybe they skip us for a few years, but then they remember what a tremendous presentation we gave them, and then when the time is right, they come here. And your council members need to be in touch with what's available, what do we have? We need to think about strategic... We need to think about strategic ways of incentivizing businesses to come in. I'd love a tax increment reinvestment zone along 30 and along 80 to bring new businesses. There's too many empty parcels, and that Chaparral Dodge, that needs to be redeveloped immediately. And by putting a tax increment reinvestment zone, not a 380 agreement, not a tax abatement, but a terms, and maybe a public improvement district as well, so that taxpayers aren't bearing the burden of reinvestment for that area, we need to immediately say, "Wouldn't it be fabulous if we brought Milestone Electric and put it in the old Dodge-Chaparral spot, and that was a clean, not rundown spot, and we had that humming?" Of course, we're going to talk to the neighborhood before we do that, and we're going to have them present a plan. We're going to see whether the neighborhood likes that or not. That's what collaborative leadership is. A council member with staff going together, and Terry, we're going to have to spruce you up, we'll take you with us, and go to those locations and say, "What can we do to get you here? We've got the perfect site. We've talked to the owner. Let's go." That's what we need.
Okay, this question will be Mr. Miklos, and then Mr. Porter. And the question is, "Describe any programs or initiatives that you would propose to engage citizens and business owners in improving our community."
Business owners, citizens. The perfect example of where I think there is, and forgive me for having a slight level of criticism, the TA truck stop zoning case came before the Mesquite City Council the last session, and it was denied. And I believe a large reason, I wasn't on the council, so I can't sit in your minds and say why you did or did not vote in a certain way, but I believe that a large reason, not the only reason, Councilman Tarple, you had your own reasons as well, and I appreciate that, but a large reason was, when Councilman Noshay brought up the TA truck stop, he showed that the site had been neglected for 14 years. He basically turned into prosecutor and cross-examined the TA individuals and said, "Look what you've allowed to happen to your site in the city." And I believe a large part of that was why that zoning case was denied. But here's something that I want everyone to realize. The city did not enforce its codes to the extent to stop that from decaying for 14 years. When we talk about businesses and citizens partnering with the community, TA should have been engaged 13 years ago and said, "Clean that site up, knock that building down, blade it to the ground, and if you don't, we're going to send you a bill." First, you contact and talk with your owners. You work with them. It's a business-friendly environment, but you don't allow the TA truck stop to decay for 14 years and then turn away an attempt at reinvestment because that's happened. The city, we, the citizens, we all bear the same responsibility for allowing that to happen, and that has to end. Your council members have to go in their districts and identify problems and then question staff, not wait for staff to bring it to them. Question staff, "Why is this this way, and how do we fix this, and then make sure it's fixed?" That's how we partner with our citizens and our business community. Thank you.
All right, restating, Mr. Porter. Describe any programs or initiatives that you would propose to engage citizens and business owners in improving our community.
Well, there are a lot of good things going on, a lot of problems going on, a lot of involvement there. Meeting Ham is gone. At one point in time, Google came out and left it what used to be Western Electric. That's such a large piece of property. It's really a hard sale. I've been told they seriously considered coming in, but the reason they didn't, it's too close to the railroad track. And if you ever have a train derailment and they have shut down totally, they just can't operate there. So there's things that come up sometimes that stop cities from being able to do the things they want to, but our city does work very hard. I like the idea of having 100% occupancy in all of our retail businesses. We see vacant storefronts from time to time, and I've gotten some information from the city recently that said 95% of our commercial property is occupied. That's, that's a pretty good number, you know? So you're always going to have some things that are not there, but I think along kind of the lines there that don't waste, which help to, want retail businesses to come in with us, is to keep our whole city looking better, and that gets back to code enforcement. And our city is really cracking down on code enforcement. They've hired three additional code enforcement people, the ambassadors code. I went to one of their training sessions and orientation, about 30 people there, and they were all interested in doing it. I asked the presenter after it was over, "Do you have something that they want to do it?" And he said, "Yeah, but the reason they give is that they find out they can't do it in their own neighborhood, because, you know, we all have somebody in our neighborhood we want them to picture house up." But that's been a very, that's a problem. Get, get our residential, that would help bring in more and better retail. Thank you.
Okay, the final question, we still have closing statements coming up, but the final question starts with a statement, and that is that the partnership between the city and the business community is very important to the city of Mesquite. How would you like the Chamber of Commerce, representing the business community, to be even more involved with the city in the coming year? And we've got Bill, you're first.
Well, the city just recently entered into a new contract with the chamber, and there are specific goals and guidelines in there of things that they need to do, and a lot of them center around having more contact with the businesses in Mesquite, finding better ways for them to operate their business, particularly the restaurants. That's one of our main things here in the city of Mesquite. This is a good restaurant town, you know? We've got several different restaurant chains, and we're the leading one in the whole chain of good restaurant things. So we need to get them involved in community events. Thank you to go home, a good example of somebody that does that, Panera Bread. You know, my garvie over there, he's, he's doing things all the time. I went to the living cutting at the bus park for the Rotary Club this afternoon at lunch. There's Panera Bread sandwiches over there for this night, nice lunch. So we need to get all of our restaurants to do it, rather than just Panera's, you know? But I think that's a key element that we need to get in that maybe we're missing out on right now. Thank you.
Again, the statement is, "The city and the business community have an important partnership to play." Robert, how would you like the Chamber of Commerce, representing the business community, to be even more involved with the city in the coming year?
I thought he was going to say something else, like we had a tornado warning or something. You know, I answered most of that question earlier. I'd love to take the Chamber of Commerce with our economic development team and go out and get business. But the second part of this answer is, is we need to have a good idea of exactly what businesses are here, what they need and what they need to stay here, and what they can do if there's a problem with their property to improve their properties. Your council members need to know and work with city staff and not wait for city staff to tell them, "What do we need to do out here?" The perfect example is Town East and Motley. Y'all familiar with Town East and Motley? The Sonic has graffiti, bed rolls, a pile of lumber. I just drove by there before coming here. Looks like it's about to fall down. So what the business community can do, and what the council can do, is work with staff to contact that owner and find out what the problem is, and then say, "Hey, can you clean this up?" And then if they don't respond, and you say, "No, you're going to clean this up." And if they don't respond, then you clean it up. We don't wait 14 years to let a thing decay. That Pizza Inn looks empty, bricks falling down. That gas station, the old cellular phone place there, that intersection, the parking lot over to the Chinese food place, we need to work with our owners to improve their properties, get an inventory. But before this sounds too harsh, we also need to work with our business owners and say, "What do you need to stay here to improve what you've got here, to keep here? What can we do?" Work with them to improve their ability to stay here and serve our citizenry and bring in more businesses. Terry, I'm planning to wear you out in the next year if I'm elected, and that's what we need to do, both things. Enhance what we have, bring in new. That's what we need. Thank you. I think I've got to close in here in just a minute. Do you want to just take your seat?
Yeah. We've got closing statements now, but it's one more time. I've got three minutes each.
Thank you.
Mr. Miklos is first.
I'm Robert Miklos. I wish to be your council member for place one, because I look at this as a job. It's a service job, to serve the community, to get out, find out what people want, and then deliver that for the people. Our people are amazing, knowledgeable individuals, and they are the strength of our community, and you must serve them by getting out and asking them what they want, and then delivering those needs to them. We have a lot of challenges ahead. We have a lot of good things as well. Ashley Furniture's a good start there, and I applaud that effort. We need Ashley Furniture times 10. We need homes in the 4,000 empty acres along I-20 all the way to Kaufman County. We need restaurants and retail and Kohl's. I'd say Mervyn's, but I don't think Mervyn's has been open for about five years, right? Although I really like that I can get my shirts there, I just get stacked. We need mid-size box retail. We need to redevelop US-80. And I'll say it right now, we need to usher out the old motels and bring in new vibrant businesses and a business campus in the community along 80 and 30, and have the cash registers ringing. Everyone who drives onto Fornie or Terrell needs to stop first in Mesquite and drop their wallet and then head on out. We need to get that business, and we need to keep that business. So our tax registers and our taxes are flowing and vibrant and paying for the services that we all want. The way we pay for more police, we have more retail and commercial businesses along our incredibly visible and accessible arteries, 80, 30, 20, 635. We need to be capturing every moment of business along those areas and put businesses there that serve the community, work with our residences. What I want one day, I don't want anybody to even know I was ever on the council. I'm not looking for glory, I'm not looking for my name or whatever else anybody says. What I want to do is I want to sit in a cafe eight years from now where those motels used to be along 80, and I want somebody to sit there and say, in the booth next to me, not even knowing it's me, "How did they do that in Mesquite? How did they get so much? Look how great that is. We can hardly even get a house in there. What a tremendous city. It's wall-to-wall, wonderful businesses, all the police. It's the safest city I've ever seen." That's my vision. We can do that. Anybody tell you we can't do something? Have them talk to me. Thank you.
Mr. Porter, three minutes closing statement.
Thank you. Well, as I've said before, we're on a roll. Things are better than they've ever been, you know? We're getting a new Dick's Sporting Goods, we're having a fifth acre store in Town East Mall. You know, we've got the Conne building, it's going to be all filled up. A new building is going to be built in the Target Shopping Center. We're going to get a home goods store. Party City's going to move around there. Party City, again, it's the smallest location of all of the Party Cities, and it's the highest grossing one. We've got several businesses like that, so great things are going on. But one thing I appreciate about our city staff, when I'm thinking, "Boy, we're doing great, things are going well," and they always say, "Well, we could do better." And I like that, you know? Admission statements, whatever you want to call them, but that's the way our city staff works, no matter how good things are, and things are good right now. We've got to keep them that way, so I'm happy being here and I want to help keep going with the things that we're doing, so thank you very much.
All right, that concludes our forum for the city. We appreciate everybody coming out, giving us your time. We appreciate all the candidates coming forward speaking. We appreciate those that aren't running for coming on out anyway and being a part of it from the other side tonight. And with that, we're adjourned.